Okay, we're gonna be starting the meeting. We're gonna call it to order. Roll call and declaration of quorum.
Dr. Matusic?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Present.
Mr. Chet? Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Tillman?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item 1.2, like and welcome all visitors. Thank you for coming this evening. Agenda item 2, public comments. Did anyone sign the speaker list?
I don't think they did.
I got it. You were always down.
That's right.
Knocked it down.
I'm not gonna let him get near me with a needle. I saw how easy that was this morning.
See me walk up with a syringe in my...
Okay. Agenda item 2.2. We do have a speaker this evening, Mrs. Kathley... Kathy Riley. We're ready for you.
Okay. I don't have to stand up, do I?
You do not, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You all know I'm retiring. And after 32 years, I got a lot to say. But I tried to minimize it as much as possible. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing me to teach here for 32 years. This is the only school I've ever been in. I came here, I went to school, and now I came back and have been here for 32 years. I've watched principal after principal, superintendent after superintendent, and a whole lot of teachers go through here. It's a good school system. I'm really sorry that you see that many go through. But I know we're just a stepping stone on their way to something bigger. Those who stay are generally graduates from here. If you really pay any attention, I told Todd today, I said, "I can't believe how many of the people that teach here are students I've had." I'm like, "Whoa, okay." Teachers have a chain of command that we have to live by. But when that chain breaks down, they need to know who to talk to next. And the chain has broken down before. I didn't know who to go to. I couldn't go to my principal, I couldn't go to my superintendent, and my next step was gonna be the school board. That's what I thought. But none of them would listen to me. They couldn't talk to me, I was told by all five at the time. Separately, of course, because I can't talk to you unless you're all together, according to what they were telling me. So out of that 32 years, I had five really miserable years. And I kept telling my husband, who got the brunt of it all, I said, "I live here. I've grown up here." I said, "That's not right for outsiders, both outsiders, to come in and do this to me." I said, "I'm not going to give it up." And all of you guys, not you guys, but the school board, nobody would listen to me. And so, I went through it. Eventually, OEA finally helped me out and apparently talked to them because they both approached me and very loudly said, "We are not afraid of OEA." Apparently, they were. They were gone the year, next year after that.
A year, two years.
Yeah. Our teachers also need a support system. When our students are not doing the work that we have given them and they're gonna flunk, we need to be backed by the people that should be higher up. I promise, we bend over backwards to see to it that our kids have the information, should know the information. They have been taught the information. But then when it gets right down to it, and I mean, they're flunking. There's no two ways about it. We, as teachers, feel like they should flunk because they haven't done the work. But the parents, they don't approve of it, and we don't have the support that says that we can flunk them. What more can we do, is what we're asked. What more can we do? Seriously, I mean, I promise, we have bent over backwards trying to see to it these kids did not flunk. And I know, you know, high school is not gonna be that way because high school, they have to have so many credits to graduate. Okay? This is gonna be elementary and middle school. Okay? But as we've gone along here, the teachers ask me, "Are you gonna talk about that tonight?" I'm like, "Uh, yeah, I can put that in there." And so, they wanna know, you know, where are we gonna get this backing from? You know, which should be our principals, should be our superintendents. I don't ever know if it ever gets to the superintendents. But they want it mentioned because it's becoming a problem. I mean, these kids are definitely gonna flunk, and they don't flunk. I told them, I said, "We can send them on, let them go to the school board and get, you know, see if they can explain to the parent why that child should go on." But it's up to the ones now that's gonna be there. Also know that you all each have your own jobs, and I appreciate the fact that you all have your own jobs. And I do know that your jobs require a lot of time. But it would be nice if, at any opportunity that you might have where you had a little extra time someplace, to stop by our schools, go into our buildings, talk to our teachers. Because I promise, they have things to say. But they know they are not gonna get to talk to you one-on-one about things they have to say. But if you walk in and ask, I promise, they're gonna talk to you. And they also would be glad to know that the board is interested in them. They said, "We have a school board, but it's for the kids and for the superintendent. I guess the community too." But, you know, they don't really know. They just know that the board doesn't seem to be for them. I can't answer that. I said, "They should be," but I said, "I don't, I mean, I don't know what they're talking about." Other than the fact, I know we did have a period of time where we had a school board member or two that would come into the building. And we were just like, "Whoa, wonder what he's looking for." We're not thinking, "Hey, you're just there to see what's going on." And I think you should. And again, I don't know if you agreed, if you had to agree to the Polycam or not, okay? And to virtual. But that's something you guys need to see for how it really truly works. I don't know if any of you have been in and seen or talked to, but to watch a teacher do it, use it, and to see what the kids do with it. The only problem with that is if you're gonna do virtual, we're gonna have to come up with some rules to follow on it. It's great to be able to see them and talk to them when they're at home and we're in the classroom. They're sick or we're out of school. But out of the 63 students that we had this year in 5th grade, when we got back after that three weeks, only 48 of them had done their work. And now we've got three weeks of backlog of work they don't, they didn't bother to do. And so, this is something that we've got to get our parents involved in to also help us. We were emailing the parent every day that we weren't getting assignments. We still didn't get assignments. And so, this has to be a thing that goes on between the school, the parents, and the kids. And like I said, it's a good thing. I have no qualms about that. Other than, in fact, I don't like teaching in front of it, but that's just because I don't like cameras. So, I mean, putting that in the handbook might be a good idea. So, I mean, you guys, as you're making up the handbook for next year, might keep that in mind. We've gotta have something in there letting the kids know. Which brings me to the handbook. If you're gonna have a handbook, and you're gonna have rules in that handbook that are supposed to be followed, then follow them. Expect the kids to follow them. Because the kids are not going to follow them if you don't make them. And we are constantly at them, at them, at them, at them. And we're, "Show us where that's at." So, I show them where it's at. "Oh." I said, "You all signed for this handbook? You all say you read that handbook." I said, "You've got to know what's in that handbook." So, you know, help us out on that. You know, if you got a dress code, make it a dress code that is enforceable and is enforced. Same way with virtual. If you're gonna put it in there, make sure that it's something that can be enforced. Brings back to the support of your teachers with discipline. Teachers don't pass out punishment just because we think it's fun. If we actually do send them to the office, make sure that the student knows they don't want to be sent there again. We need help on this. I mean, the students, as years have gone on, as far as discipline goes, is going downhill. And if we can't get a handle on it, and we try real hard, then, I mean, it, teacher's gonna be hard fought to be able to teach. And we send them to the office to get them out of the classroom because we can't teach. And we get that one out, well, everybody realizes, oh, something's gonna happen here. And so, everybody settles back down. But if they come back and nothing happens, then it's left on the teacher to have to, you know, shell out that discipline. And that's fine, too. We didn't mind doing that. But we need help. The students are getting more and more out of hand when it comes to acceptable behavior and unacceptable behavior. If they're not being taught that at home, they need to be taught it at school so that everyone can learn. And that's kinda where we all are. So, board, I know you have rules that you have to live by also. I'm not dumb. I mean, I've went through your guidelines and everything, too. But let the teachers know that you're there for them as well as the students. Sometimes, go back and ask a teacher, that's not your close friend, how things are going at school. Is that confidentiality, breaking confidentiality? No, that's not, because we're not talking about a specific student. How's things going at school? And we'll tell ya. They'll tell you. I won't anymore. I think they'd be grateful that you showed them that you cared. Thank you again for 32 very memorable years, both good and bad. So, I appreciate you guys very much, 'cause I know what you guys do is not appreciated enough. But I hope going forward that you, you know, things look better for you, work out better for you. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the track. That track has got, something's gotta happen to it. I guess, it's awful. We had little Olympics over there. It's awful. And so, hey, we've got a new dome, let's work for a track now. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. And you've served two years of service. Agenda item 3.3, consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to pull out for discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Dr. Matusic?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Hi.
Mr. Griffin?
I am staying on 3.8 since it was nine pages long. I wasn't gonna read everything on the surplus list and approve and vote yes on everything else. And if any of you all read that surplus list, you're lying.
Mr. Tillman?
Yeah. I love it.
Bet you read the list, huh?
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 4.1, discussion of possible board action regarding activity fund transfers.
They're open.
Thank you. 4.2, discussion of possible board action regarding bids for the 95 van who'll bus.
We, uh, we had two.
Big Blue.
Well, you probably called it Big Blue. That's kinda secondary nickname, Moby.
Just keep going.
But I know we got a couple bids, but they're set on Randy's desk, so I need to move that till maybe after the executive session.
All right, so you can go get those.
Go get those. We did get two bids, which were two more than I thought we would see.
All right, so we're going to just skip over 4.2 for later discussion. 4.3, discussion of possible board action regarding quote from the Oklahoma School Risk Management Trust for property, casualty and liability insurance for the district for policy year beginning July 1, 21.
Did you have a good...
They're gonna, they were missing one of the reinsurance to be able to get a full quote, so they're gonna get that out by this week and start getting quotes out, so.
Do we need to table that?
Just no action.
Just no action.
Just no action, very good.
All right. So, no action on 4.3. Agenda item 4.4, discussion of possible board action regarding solicitation of bids for the 94 Ford van, 3/4 ton club wagon with lift gate.
This was the old cafeteria van that they moved food from the high school.
Like a school auctioneer.
Oh, well. No, this is a different. This is a, I don't know that this one has a name. But it, uh, there was some consideration when we moved the dumpsters from behind the elementary cafeteria down by the road so they could be picked up easier. That we might use the van to help transport trash from cafeteria. That did not appear to be a good solution. So, it is available for sale. And so, that's what I'm recommending, that we would solicit bids for the old van and sell that as well.
Do we have a motion?
So, move.
To solicit bids for the 94 Ford van?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll second that.
Dr. Matusic?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Hi.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Agenda item 4.5, discussion of possible board action regarding sports medicine and athletic training services agreement for the 21-22 school year.
So, this changes Kylie Warren, our current athletic trainer, from an employee to a contract worker, similar to our school resource officer. Would you like to explain that a little bit more? I know you've worked this on that.
This is more of her coming to me and proposing this. You know, her main love is certified athletic training. It's not the classroom portion of it. And she can do some things with her, the SSM year-round when she's not with the school. But she, that's loves Hennessy. She wants to stay here. So, it's just a contract with SSM, and she will basically, she'll be assigned to us and be the one person, our priority, you know? And so, she'll come up here by the time the kids can start coming into athletics, probably a little bit before, that way we can get her training ready and get kids ready for whatever practices and events going on that night, so.
So, that'll allow us to...
It frees her up a little bit, gives her a little bit of her...
Okay, certainly.
Now, the classrooms, that's part of her job requirements right now, correct? Yes. Yeah, I think she teaches some in the classrooms. So, she is teaching right now in the classroom. And based on this and what I've read through it, if she's only providing services for home games, I mean, then we're basically getting her...
It's not only home games. It may say that, but she'll go, "Priority is home game."
Priority is home games.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if she's...
And how many days a week is she gonna be here?
Every game day. And she'll come up on Hennessy's as well.
And I'm talking about just regular days when there's no games during that week?
She'll be here.
She'll be here every day for practices and all that?
Yep. Maybe there's a lot of sorts of flexibility, like the school and work on PT. That's what she wants to do. She don't wanna get here at 8 o'clock and then be gone. So, this allows her to come in a little bit more flexible hours, but she'll, all the athletics will be covered just like they are right now.
So, there's no delinquent coverage there that will be missing as far as the athletics?
And her health insurance then would be paid by SSM?
Oh, yeah. It's a contract. It's just a contract. That amount, and that's it. No, you know, any workers comp will go through them, any, anything. Now, I mean, they'd be no different in our school.
Right.
Insurance, or something that's fault, the work fault that causes her injury, yes, but it's something that just...
And it's an annual contract. I mean, it's an annual contract that we can revisit if it's not working.
Yep.
Any further questions, comments?
I'll move to approve the SSM contract regarding our certified athletic trainer agreement for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Dr. Matusic?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Hi.
Mr. Chet? Oh, he's not here. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
No.
Agenda item 5, new business.
No new business.
All right. Agenda item 6, superintendent report. I can't wait.
This is gonna be a kind of a, maybe your last one. So, you're getting this, Jack, on video. You might wanna put it in the vault. But you mean you hope so?
Yeah, I don't know. Don't look into it too...
So, financial update is, you know, everything's kinda stabilized. We're still down about, it was about $880,000 year-to-date, but there's some cares money that will be reimbursed, that will shorten that. We collected enough at Valorem to cover the shortfall that looked like we were going to have going into the end of the year, and that the difference in the two was about $118,000? $118,000, $115,000? So, the last two years, we've been having a shortfall in our at Valorem. They haven't been collecting enough to cover our, the money that needed to be put in the bond fund to pay for the bonds. And this year, Timber did a nice job of threatening all the folks that didn't pay their taxes in the past. She got them to pony up. You know, that's a, that's a real load off, 'cause the State Department was not happy with it. And we did a few things to try to shore that up, and it appears that they have worked. So, finances are not gonna be what they were, but they are certainly more stable than the first two, when we were down $60,000, $70,000 a month at this time. So, it feels a lot better. Facilities, so far, every time we've called on the dome to do a job, it's performed as it should. I think yesterday at graduation, the audio was really good. We had kids singing songs, we had speakers at the podium, we had just really, really good audio and video, and did some innovative things with kids walking across to their bios. It continues to perform as it's supposed to perform. And that's what I appreciate about more than anything is when we built it, we had some goals and some ideas, and it's been able to do them. If you notice how many folks were in the stands and how many were on the floor, we had a huge crowd that I don't think could've been facilitated in the auditorium because of the numbers, so.
We didn't tally that. I mean, the people coming in. 'Cause I was looking around, wondering how many more people we could've got in there. I mean, it's several hundred more.
We had more space, but, yeah, it was full, but it had, it was comfortably full. So, again, that's the thing that I'm excited about because I've lost a lot of sleep wondering if it would. We'd get in there and the audio would just echo, but it's been spectacular every time we've used it. And the video is Todd and Ms. Fuchsah have been able to make it dance and do whatever they wanted it to do. And so, it's been really nice. I think that's all at this point. I don't have much on programs, engagements, or policies. You guys have any questions?
I got two questions on facilities. And, um... Mrs. Riley, so you know, Mr. Sternberger is very aware of the track's condition as well. We've had, you know, initial discussions on that. Obviously, Dr. Wood is very aware of that, but I know that there is discussion on that. Speaking of the track, what is all the material, the brush, the mounds of dirt, the shale, everything that's been piled up through the south of the track?
That is material that was, came out of the parking lots in different projects we've done around here to build something or add something as far as parking.
I thought that some had just been recently added.
David Fuchsah has put some there, and then he is taking it back out. He just stacked it there to facilitate. I think a big part of it was this project by Abell's house. And he, that's just, he just, what he brought in, he's...
Okay, that's the fresh dirt from whenever they did this before. What was, is the intent to use that?
There's a, between the, well, my intent was, between the ag barn and the, where it is stacked right now, there's a large open culvert. And my, for drainage, comes off the track and down around. My goal was to eventually to bury a culvert in that, the full length, cover it over and put, and rock it and use...
Be able to access from the south?
Well, you could access from the south, but also when you use the ag barn right now, parking and unloading and loading is kind of tight. You could pull across and park trailers and buses and stuff in that parking lot, and it would be used for that. And that dirt would be used to cover up the culvert that we put in there.
Okay.
Just the project I haven't gotten to focus on.
I guess I was just made aware whenever I saw fresh dirt there.
That, yeah, David asked.
You can see it every day, basically. Okay. And the other thing, it just came to mind. Who does the landscaping here at the auditorium?
Donnie and, Donnie and Gary do it.
Okay, then nobody is. Because the front is an embarrassment.
It's another project that needs to be addressed as far as what do we wanna do with it? What do we want it to make it look like? We have to be cautious about what we put in front of the window because that was part of the problem.
Right, it overruled before.
Well, it...
Oh, with the water, yeah.
Yeah, well, and what happens, it collects dirt. And when it's not, you know, maybe cared for as closely as it could, that builds up and then it was holding water and it was running back in.
So, landscape fabric, all ripped and strewn and weeds. I didn't know if it was Donnie or if we contracted somebody else.
We did not. I talked about Taggerts coming in and doing something landscaping, but they really didn't do landscaping. They could sell the plants, but not as far as designing something aesthetically.
Right. I just noticed it going through the restroom. I'm like, "I'm glad we didn't have graduation here."
I agree with you.
Terrible embarrassment.
I think there's a lot of things that we could approve upon as far as the landscaping, cosmetics.
On the dome, at one time, we talked about some additional awnings between the high school and the dome. What's the status?
So, I contacted Mr. Hugaboom and Mr. Ladwick. I didn't hear back from Mr. Ladwick. I did have a conversation with Mr. Hugaboom. He hadn't responded to earlier communication because they don't do weld-up fabrication. So, what I did was I contacted the architect that drew them. He said, "Doing a bolt-up fabrication would be fine." So, Mr. Hugaboom has submitted that, I believe it's to Mueller Buildings. And they're supposed to snit some drawings to be able to put the metal part back up. I don't have anyone, I was gonna try to get it done first and then move to the shade spots after that. But the metal awnings were kind of the big thing for me right now.
And then our classrooms, the flooding, any updates there?
We're still working on it. I've got bid solicitations out. There's not enough, they're not offering enough right now. But I think it's gonna be, we're close to enough to, but we won't know it till we get the bids. Then, when we do get the bids, we'll approve those at the June meeting or vote on, we will consider them at the June meeting. And then we'll, just depends on what the bids come in at and what the insurance... They seem willing. If I had some data to show them, and so I think we get some bids, they'll probably work with us. I just don't know how much, 'cause it's, it's a ton of flooring when you throw in all the hallway from east to west, all of it changes. 'Cause it's all one continual hallway floor. So, they'll redo all of it.
Surprisingly, can't cut it at the doorway or something.
Well, but, you know, they really don't wanna, it's 'cause it's continuous flooring, so it'd be hard to make the look.
I don't know. It just seems like a lot of extra. That's all there.
We also have some resignations. And they are Jessica Malindi from 3rd grade, Reagan Newman from 2nd. Frances Streck is resigning from the teaching and coaching portion. Jose has resigned as maintenance. Of course, you know, he's retired, so there'll be some consideration about him later. Autumn Blackburn, Ellen Fly, Sharon Warden, and Carrie Ramey have all resigned for various reasons. Some retiring, some changing positions, some taking positions at other schools.
Some not having certifications?
It probably, probably was a consideration in some situations. Uh, yeah, it probably, probably, yeah, it was a consideration, some, some decision choices. Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
All right, agenda item seven, personnel, seven point one, propose executive session to discuss the employment of certified personnel and non-certified personnel for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Have a vote to enter executive session.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
We're entering open session, we entered executive session at seven thirty-one P.M. Took a five-minute recess, reconvened at seven thirty-six. We discussed, uh, the, uh, employment of certified personnel and non-certified personnel for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All board members were present, including our guest, Dr. Woods, Mr. Sternberger. No votes were taken and returned to open session at eight oh six. All right. Agenda item seven point two, discussion of possible board action regarding employment of certified personnel for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna recommend that we rehire, or we hire the folks listed on the, um, list for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Move to approve their hire.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes. Agenda item seven point three, discussion of possible board action regarding the employment of certified personnel on temporary contracts for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
It'd be my recommendation we, uh, hire the folks listed on the second list of certified personnel for twenty-one, twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
And Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item seven point four, discussion of possible board action regarding the employment of certified library media specialist on a temporary contract for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'm going to ask Mr. Crosswhite if he might, um, introduce that person to us and tell you all a little bit about that.
Okay. I'm Kristen Ashcraft, nineteen, or nineteen eighty-nine graduate of Hennessy High School, so I kind of have some past history knowing her. She's married to Donnie Ashcraft, who was a eighty-seven graduate of Hennessy High School. Um, just kind of watched her career take off ever since she's been in education. She's had a long service in Oklahoma City, been in long tenure in Enid for a long time. Actually, I reached out to her three or four years ago to ask her about employment at Hennessy Public Schools, but she was kind of content where she was at and doing good, and this time she knew that we had a library position, and she kind of reached out to us, and I just thought it was a, Ms. Skoubnik and I thought it was a slam dunk. She's been, um, the teacher of the year in her building, she's been the Garfield County Teacher of the Year. She's got a lot of accolades, she's very high on technology. She does professional development at, uh, workshops, not only on local, state, and international-type levels on professional development, so we're, I think we're getting somebody that's got a lot of experience with the library, but also with the media part as far as technology, and I think we've really hit a home run with someone that's knows Hennessy, been around Hennessy, and knows how it works. So we're real excited to hopefully have her employed next year.
What was her first name?
Kristen.
Kristen.
Ashcraft?
Ashcraft.
I'd make the motion to be employed of Ms. Kristen Ashcraft as the certified library media specialist on temporary contract for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Agenda item seven point five, discussion of possible board action regarding extra duty stipend of one thousand dollars for Gary Beeman for head custodian duties for May and June two thousand twenty-one.
I recommend that, uh, we hire Mr. Beeman to, uh, cover the time while Jose is, uh, gone, um, for the rest of this school year.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Agenda item seven point six, discussion of possible board action regarding extra duty stipend of five hundred dollars for Ruth Frank for assistant to the head custodian duties for May and June twenty-one.
Again, this is, uh, to help kind of offset Jose's departure, uh, and this is going to be covering May and June, uh, custodial duties.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Agenda item seven point seven, discussion of possible board action regarding extra duty assignments for summer reading sufficiency teachers at twenty dollars an hour for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as follows, Chelsea MacArthur, Caitlin Norton, Siobhan Heidlich, Flo Conway, Amy Hochstrasser, Katie Matthews, and Mr. Barry Crosswhite.
This is, uh, it's typically called a summer school, but it's the, this year probably more important than many others with the messed-up school year and times, uh, to, to give the kids that need extra help a little boost due to the summer.
I'll make a motion to approve seven point seven. If you'd like me to read it again, I will.
Hmm, second.
Thought I'd get one.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau? Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes. Okay, agenda item seven point eight. Discussion of possible board action regarding employment of support personnel as summer help for the period beginning May tenth twenty-one, ending June thirtieth twenty-one as follows, Aaron Guzman, Umberto Velasco, Ronnie Robles, and Yuril Munos.
You're doing great.
Aaron Wolfenstein, and Maria Fiero.
I see that. Uh, those, those are folks to help Mr. Cameron, uh, help with some of the additional yard and, and field work, plus, uh, the maintenance do the, the schools and the buildings. So I recommend that we hire those folks for the rest of summer, so in May and June.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Okay, let's go back up to agenda item.
Four point two.
Four point two. Discussion of possible board action regarding the bids for the ninety-five Van Hooel bus. The board has the right to accept, reject, or table any or all bids.
Two bids that we received.
Shall I open them? You shall. Okay. So we have a, a bid from Mr. Scott Hike of eleven hundred dollars for the Van Hooel bus. Maybe that's a hundred and ten thousand. I'll tell Scotty that. It's a hundred and ten thousand, that's a great bid.
We accepted it, he's got it.
Hundred and ten thousand, Scott, that's wonderful. Okay, and then we have a bid from Lindsey Bryley, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. So it looks like the party is with Lindsey Bryley.
The, my recommendation that we accept the bid from Ms. Bryley.
Okay, make a motion that we accept the bid from Ms. Lindsey Bryley of twenty-five hundred dollars for the ninety-five Van Hooel party bus.
Second.
This is, they're paying us, we're not paying them.
Did I say to pay them or accept them?
Dr. Matusi?
Party on.
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes. Can't wait, we invited on a trip.
Bryley's.
Got me a little nervous now, they are gonna expect the check. Are we leaving it in the glove compartment?
I said accept it, not even I say pay it.
Well, no, I, I, I'm just worried that they're thinking we're paying them to take the money.
Disposal fee.
Because zero point zero zero.
Okay, agenda item seven point nine. Propose executive session to discuss the employment of Mr. Jason Sternberger as a co-superintendent for the transition period from May twenty-fourth twenty-one until June thirtieth twenty-one.
I move to enter.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Okay, we're entering open session, we entered it into executive session at eight sixteen P.M. Excuse me here. To discuss the employment of Jason Sternberger as a co-superintendent for the transition period from May twenty-fourth twenty-one to June thirtieth twenty-one. All board members were present, uh, including Dr. Woods and Mr. Sternberger. Uh, excuse me, and Mr. Choak was absent. Thank you for pointing that out. No votes were taken and returned to open session at eight forty-three. Agenda item seven ten, discussion and possible vote to approve the contract with Mr. Sternberger for transition services as a co-superintendent to be provided to the district for the May twenty-fourth twenty-one until June thirtieth twenty-one.
It is my recommendation that we, uh, approve that co-supertendency to start as soon as humanly possible.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to, I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Sternberger for transition services as a co-superintendent to be provided to the district from May twenty-fourth until June thirtieth twenty-one.
Second.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Don?
Yes.
So what is the salary for that time period? The salary for that time period?
The salary will be, uh, negotiated and we'll, we'll have terms of that contract for Mr. Sternberger. We're approving his services right now.
Oh, okay, so you're gonna do that, what, next month, or the contract, or?
We'll be in touch with our, uh, school officials and, uh, we'll get it, get that drawn up.
Sometime, okay.
I don't have an eight point one.
Have an eight, you got an eight. It's on, it's on that.
It's on here, yeah.
Fighting.
Does that mean you're making a motion?
No. I can't because it's not on that sheet.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Why, yes.
Yes.